It is seven o'clock. I will call to order this special meeting of the Perry Township Board of Trustees. Ms. Kayla, will you call, Raul?
Trustee, Wendy?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
So it came to our attention earlier today that Fiscal Officer Benkin is not going to be able to join us during this meeting. Um, which kind of makes me wonder how much of this we can actually discuss.
Well, I, I, she sent the information a couple of days ago regarding the Otarma insurance.
Right.
Um, I think that's a conversation that we can have and we can let her know what we're thinking. Um, and the same thing with the Permissive Fund. Randy's online and I, I had talked with Randy a little bit to try to see, you know. Well, I'll just wait until we get in that conversation. So, um, I guess first on the Otarma insurance coverage. Was there anything that, uh, basically set us up to need to adjust our coverage? Cause that's what I wasn't sure on is if something came up that I just wasn't aware of that we needed to address regarding lowering the coverage? Or was this something that was basically being looked at as a cost savings? Risk versus cost savings? Because I don't, I don't recall.
And ask Rhonda.
So, and another thing that we need to really work on is we need a full calendar of events that happen throughout the year. From a fiscal perspective, from a township perspective, anything that regularly occurs in a given year. We need to have those dates identified so that we can plan.
It's in the township handbook, not our township. It's in the OTA handbook.
Right. So we need to basically get pen to paper on that. And that way we can plan a little bit more proactively than having special meetings at the 11th hour.
Well, and I, if you mean, you mean about the CD coming up?
No, I'm talking about the, I mean, the Otarma insurance coverage. That, that happens annually. And we could have probably tackled that during the last Board of Trustees. But we didn't know it was coming. We lost the beat on it and now we had to have a meeting to actually discuss it. That, that, that was my point.
Well, I mean, it's unfortunate. We have to have the meetings if we're going to communicate with each other, but, um, in my question, you know, I, I basically was going to ask Miss Benkin why we were even discussing changing it, you know, and again, you're pretty much parroting what you just said. Is it because we're trying to save money? Is it because we don't need as much coverage? What, I mean, I'm not sure why that even came up.
I'm going back through the emails.
Missy, do you know?
I, if I remember correctly, I thought Ms. Benkin had said something at the one meeting about maybe if there was a chance we could lower the insurance. Why? I don't know.
Well, I think we had talked about that once before, but decided with the number of people suing us and everything else going on, we probably didn't want to mess with any coverages.
So it, it looks like the rates may have gone up. The email that, uh, Rhonda has sent back on March 26th, uh, says, based on the current $4 million dollar coverage calculations, this is how much we'd have to pay per fund. And then she listed the appropriations for 2021, which were well under the appropriations. So the, the current cost for the $4 million coverage is $7,838 and our appropriation was $8,500. For general, the road appropriation or the road cost is $11,821 and the appropriation is $12,000. Uh, the police cost is $13,890 and the police appropriation was $11,672.33. So it looks like the police would have to appropriate an additional $2,217.67 or possibly lower the coverage. So, um, when she sent the first email, it said, no calculations for departments has been figured at this time for the three or two mil coverage. I need to contact Otarma for this information.
Right. It said before payments can be made, we need to decide whether we're going to stay with the $4 million coverage. And the police appropriation will need to be decided. So if we, to me, it seems like those are two different things.
Well, at the current cost, every, every other fund is good except for the police fund. They underappropriated for the cost for this year. So that.
Jason, I wasn't even aware of what, what had to be appropriated. Um, that was something that, uh, has never been discussed. So I don't know how the 11,000 came about.
And that may have just been a carryover from the previous year of what the cost was approximately. Um, the weird thing is, is everything else ends in two zeros. The other funds and the police fund is more exact, is a not a rounded number, basically. Okay. So that may have just been a carryover. I, I, I don't know. With Ms. Benkin not here, it's hard to say. So that being the case, if we're at 4 million, do we have an approximation? I mean, we've got, uh, Ms. Robbins is on, Chief's on. Do we have an approximation for the assets of the township? Would 3 million suffice for what we currently have? Cause it, it's a tough split. We either get it down to where it fits within the appropriation for the police department. Or we have to have it where, or we can lower the overall coverage to better fit within what's been appropriated.
Well, and there was an email back from Wendy French that had said, you know, and I don't know what Rhonda asked him or asked her rather, but said, I can't, if that's what they go with. I don't know what her question was. It would be almost impossible to figure now. The total savings would be pretty close to equally spread out the three, between the three funds. So without seeing what Rhonda's question exactly to Wendy was, I'm not sure if she, you know what.
And that's a good point because not, nowhere in Rhonda's email does it say anything about the deductible.
Right, exactly. We don't know what it is. How much do we need to spend in order to even get covered? And do we have it to spend?
Can we transfer money out of, uh, Chief, somewhere out of Chief Littleton's? So he has enough that we end up going with the 4 million?
I don't think we can.
I don't know why we couldn't, but that would be a Rhonda question again.
Cause you.
Jason, you had, you asked the question. I'm sorry, Missy, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Randy.
I, you asked the question, would that coverage be sufficient for anyone? Uh, in my particular case at the garage, uh, because of all of our assets being stored under one roof? If there was something that was, uh, extremely hazardous to that building, fire, tornado or whatever, and damaged all that equipment at one time. Uh, if, I think the, the 4 million was still covered and even the three possibly would. We're looking at maybe seven pieces of equipment, probably averaging average 40 to 50,000 each. Uh, by the time you, you talk about the trucks, tobacco, the mini trackos and everything combined. Uh, you know, if it were just one section of the three versus, you know, the police, the, the other, the general and myself. I think any one of those, the three would probably cover.
So what about if in the next year, I mean, I know you're still looking into it, but the new, uh, one ton that we're looking at?
Right.
A few other things.
Yeah, I kind of, I kind of calculated mine based on about seven major pieces of equipment. We have averaging, averaging about 40 to, 40 to 50,000 apiece.
Okay.
Uh, just as a replacement cost. So when you, when you look at that, along with some other peripherals inside the building, um, you know, some of the stuff would just be non-replaceable, such as some cemetery records and stuff, but
Right.
when you're talking about replacing major assets like that, I still think 3 million would cover any one area.
So Chief.
Randy would.
Oh, go ahead.
Would, would that also be included, uh, you know, re, any repairs or anything like that to the building? Because that is my concern with, with lowering this too low. If we have one tornado that rips through the township and it takes out the maintenance garage and makes its way to the township building, um, and destroys everything, you know, is that coverage going to be enough to cover both buildings and get all of our assets back up and running?
Yeah. What I was talking about, I did not consider the building as part of that. I was only looking at assets. So you, you are correct. The, uh, if that were to be the case, such as the tornado that we had a couple of years ago, uh, you know, in a straight line like that, if it goes across and gets both, uh, then I would not think that the 3 million would probably be enough when you talk about buildings and all the other assets combined.
Because what you'd have to keep in mind is, is the permits, um, and everything else that would have to be repulled and filed, uh, you know, to go into this. So there's a lot of a cost. And I think, you know, lowering it from four to three, okay. Um, but to, you know, to even drop it down to 2 million, I just save some money. I, I think that there's other places that, uh, you know, could be cut potentially. Uh, you know, in order to save, uh, you know, 1,100 bucks or, you know, two grand.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see the final number exactly what the saving is going to be dropping down. So I, I would have to agree with that. I would feel, I don't know that I would feel good with dropping that down.
I would like to know what the deductible is. And then when I was going through it, like, like Perry B, I mean, they valued that building. I can think at 30, 35,000. There's, there's no way that building is worth 30 to 35,000.
No.
Yeah, I don't think.
And that, that includes the contents in it. There's nothing in there that's.
There's nothing in it. Yeah. But I would like to know what the deductible is because some insurance companies you can work with the deductible, you can make a higher deductible or a lower deductible.
Yes.
Well, and if, if some major event happened right now and took out, you know, our entire fleet, um, you know, the cost of equipment has gone up because Ford has redesigned their vehicles. Uh, so the stuff that we could potentially carry over to put into new cruisers, that option is no longer there. Um, and because of that, and because of Ford, you know, redesigning the interior of their vehicles, uh, it has allowed for other, um, entities that supply this equipment to increase their costs because they went back to the drawing table to, you know, have to refabricate something to those specs. Um, and, and we saw that when, when we got our, our new unmarked, um, you know, the prices to outfit that vehicle uh, to the fullest, uh, like every, all the other fleet vehicles, you were close to $60,000 by the time you got the vehicle purchased and got it completely outfitted and and everything else. So based upon that, we would have five cruisers to replace at $60,000. And that's not including the new modems that would have to be put in, uh, new radios that would need to be put in, new laptops, uh, you know, that, that type of stuff. So.
Chief Little.
I, I, I think.
Sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know offhand, can we move money out of your accounts into that account? Or do we have, does it, do we have to stick with that?
Uh, if what was appropriated was the 11,000 and I'm a couple of thousand short and that's supposed to come out of my fund. I have, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood, a little over $20,000 that wasn't appropriated. Now that was set aside for emergency type situations. So, um, if I'm able to do that, um, I, it should not be an issue.
Okay. Cause I, I know when I worked at CTC and we had issues like this, you know, if you went over on your budget or whatever, it was, they just, they moved, they, we approved money to be moved. So I don't know how this works.
Now, if, let's say if the road department was, um, the one that was, you know, underappropriated, um, you cannot take money out of my fund to give to the road department to, to cover that. But if this is for my portion of the bill, um, and if everybody's, you know, divided into, you know, to thirds or however it's divided, then, you know, it, it just wasn't enough that was appropriated. Um, and I, 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 maybe Jason's right with, you know, this was just a number that was looked at from last year because I, and remembering the conversation with Ms. Benkin, I, I think that was um, a number that was kind of thrown out there. Um, but there's a lot of numbers thrown out during the, um, the budgeting. So I can't really say for sure, but, um, so if it was just underappropriated and that's what's supposed to come out of my fund, I don't see why there would be any issues, but that, I'm not the one in charge of finances or anything like that. So I don't have the answer to that.
No, yeah, exactly.
I, my, I have a question also though, if nothing has changed from last year, then how was it underappropriated? Cause Rhonda's been doing this and, and not saying this is on Rhonda, but she's been doing it for years. Where's the change? What's different now?
Rate increases probably.
Yeah. And Jason said probably rate increases.
And after, after a, a couple of lawsuits that will be paid out and everything else, your, your rates are going to increase. So on top of just a yearly increase.
We've had lawsuits in the general fund as well, though. I'm not seeing a big change there.
So.
So, I mean.
Well, go ahead, Chief.
No, I, I, test it down and do a complete calculation on what it would cost to redo everything. Um, you know, either at the township house, uh, or out at the road garage, or, you know, even altogether. Um, you know, we could set and, you know, gather all that data and, and put it into an Excel sheet or however, so everybody can look at it. Um, but I think, you know, the big question is, is it, you know, changing from a, a $4 million coverage to a $3 million coverage for a saving of a couple of hundred dollars, you know, all the way up to, you know, maybe $700, you know, I, you don't know what the future is going to hold with how expensive things are going to get to, you know, to be able to replace uh, and all that stuff. So I just don't know if it would be worth it to do it now and revisit it later, or just leave it the way that it is.
So I, I found the email that actually had the deductibles in it. So let me pull this up. All right. Can you guys see the Otarma invoice here?
Yeah.
All right. So most townships, I guess, have a problem with increase. They don't have a, uh, anything listed to decrease. Um, so the looks like the deductibles for miscellaneous property, uh, scheduled and unscheduled, as well as EDP hardware is $250. Uh, the building has a $500 deductible. Personal property is $600 deductible. And oh, which property is that? Okay. So the township building has a $500 deductible. The maintenance building has a $500 deductible.
Those sound awful low.
Those are really low.
Yeah. I mean, that, uh, you know, my house has a thousand. I mean, it's just, uh, I think, I think you could be, you could benefit there by increasing the deductible. I don't know that we, what claims have we had against the buildings, um, in the last few years?
From anything I've been able to find, we haven't.
No, I, none that I'm aware of. Um, that looks like an opportunity there. If you can negotiate, uh, higher deductibles versus versus the decrease in overall.
Even the vehicles have $500 deductibles.
No, cause I know here I have a $1,000 deductible on my car insurance.
So that's probably the question that we need to ask is, uh, get with Fiscal Officer Benkin and ask her about increasing the deductible at the $4 million coverage and see how that shortens the gap. Uh, was there a deadline? So this was effective as of the fifth. That's what that was. So.
Are, are the other pieces of the Otarma report, uh, the, the outages that we're all taking care of in our own respective areas, are those also going to benefit us on, on a rate?
What do you mean? Say that again, Randy?
Uh, all the, the full Otarma report that came out that we all have some opportunities to decrease the risk, such as my tanks and some other stuff. Uh, I'm sure everybody got a piece of this.
Oh, yeah.
But when, when we remedy those situations, uh, is that also going to be reflected in, um, possibly lower rates coming?
It should. That's, that's part of, you know, the better score we get on those things, the lower our rates should be.
Right. So, so I just wonder if everybody's doing those and taking care of those particulars that, uh, we turn those in and we don't, we also don't use that along with a little bit higher deductible to possibly reduce that rate. And, uh, to, to expand that coverage for Chief there so that he doesn't have to dip into his budget for other things.
Right. And I also, like, I, I don't know what you guys feel about that Perry B. I don't know why we have that much coverage on 30,000 on that little tiny building.
Yeah, we probably need to go through this list and adjust all the deductibles and find out what the impact is at the $4 million coverage. I mean, a $250 deductible on a $1,000 chainsaw, which I doubt the chainsaw is worth a thousand dollars.
No.
Is the same as, uh, the 2011 Ford Holland tractor. No. So I, I don't know how these were set. I don't know the process by which the deductibles were selected. Um, I think that they're awfully low and we, we probably need to, this needs to be something that we work through with Rhonda. And probably have, uh, Wendy, I didn't catch what her last name was in the email we read.
French.
Available to kind of tell us, hey, if we increase deductibles based at the current coverage, what's the impact? Right?
Right.
If we, if we look, if we basically went through here and classified the different types of equipment and just said, you know, a $1,500 deductible for the buildings, right? Police vehicles, a thousand. Right? And then just start, that way we're not going to go through every single thing, but at least try to get classifications of things and find out what the impacts would be. Um, we could probably do that through email. We just need to, uh, make sure we're on the same page and we can have Karen coordinate that. Um, I can take an initial cut and have it to Karen by midday tomorrow. And then, uh, she can socialize it with the other two trustees. And we'll CC Rhonda on the whole thing. And then we'll, uh, see if we can coordinate something with, uh, Otarma to find out what the impact of shifting those deductibles would be.
Find out how we came to the prices that are quoted. And, you know, again, I'm questioning why the police department is the only one with the misquoted or the missed appropriation. If it's been this way for however long, I mean, and I know because things have gone up and prices have gone up, but it's something just doesn't feel right there on it.
No.
And that's like right there. You got the 91, 91 dump truck valued at 48,000.
Yeah, that's not worth 48.
I'll take it.
Those are really, really nice snowblades.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, who came up with the property values and are those editable? We may need to find out if we have an extension or a deadline. Um, if this goes into effect April 5th, then we don't have a lot of time to work on this. But I think, um, yeah, if you can get on that tomorrow, Jason, or.
And if, and if, you know, if Rhonda's out of pocket because she's under the weather, totally understand. Um, I could also reach out to Rhonda and find out, you know, as long as I CC her on stuff, if it's, if she has a problem with me reaching out to, uh, the, uh, woman at, at Otarma.
Yeah.
Well, I definitely don't think, oh, go ahead, Missy.
No, I was just going to say, if you're going to do that with Rhonda, why don't you could just go ahead and CC, uh, that Wendy French?
Yeah, we could do that.
Same time.
Ask her for her inputs as we go.
Yeah. Exactly. Instead of, you know.
I think we need to keep Rhonda in this loop because she is our fiscal officer and it's her thing. We don't want to exclude her from this, but I think there's also there's puzzle pieces we're missing.
Right. And I'm not saying that, but we're on a time crunch here, you know, April, April 5th and you know, instead of waiting till Rhonda comes back to give us the information, we can, you know.
Reach out to her and say, hey, here's what the deal is.
Yeah.
I think the only bad thing is that Rhonda doesn't have access to email outside the office.
No.
And that hasn't been set up yet. So.
Jason, on that, on that particular spreadsheet that you have up there yet, did I get copied on that? I don't think I've seen that.
Uh, probably not. This came through. Yes, you did.
Yeah.
Uh, it was sent back on the 25th.
Let me, let me look at it.
And I could resend it to you if you don't have it.
Limit and deductible options?
I think you got, you got it all, Randy, on that.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think there's two, there's two attachments on that email. Is that correct?
Yep, that's correct.
I got, I've got it. I'm going to, I'm going to pull that off myself, Jason. I want to go over our line items and just see where I see if there's any outages on ours and I'll send that in.
So I guess right there is the num, well, you guys can't see my screen. Sorry. The, uh, the three mil would, it says that the three mil would be a reduction of $1,338. Uh, two mil would be a reduction of $2,903. Um, I don't know if that's per fund. But that would definitely close the gap. Um, but yeah, it sounds like we need just a little bit more guidance on this. We have a few options in play. We'll see what, working with the deductibles, uh, you know, allows us to get in return. And, uh, I mean, that's all we could do at this point.
Right.
So more to follow. Stay tuned.
Okay.
Okay. So the second, was there anybody else that had anything about the first topic? Okay. So the second topic was regarding the Permissive Fund CD. Uh, I had talked with Randy about this. I know, you know, we've been talking about that one ton replacement and a few other things. Uh, we're unlikely to pull that trigger in the next six months. So if we wanted to do a six month renewal on the CD and give the, uh, current maintenance team a chance to assess and prioritize uh, what they need to acquire over the next year. In six months, we should be better qualified to decide if we want to do a long-term role uh, of the Permissive Fund at that time. Or if we're going to be using some of that money to update some of the equipment in the, uh, maintenance garage.
Uh, just to clarify that, Jason, I think when, uh, I did want to try to pull the trigger on that one ton truck that we'd started on previously prior to the six months. So I think that money's in the Permissive Fund already.
Yep, that's right.
But the additional Permissive Fund CD that would be in there, uh, I don't anticipate using for that time period. So that's why I would recommend, uh, the six month CD for this year.
Right. So would anyone have an issue with doing a six month term and then revisiting this?
The interest rates on those at six months was point one zero. And if you went to full year, it was point one five. So it's almost negligible, the difference on, uh, interest rates as far as uh, the long term. And I don't think I want to lock it up for a year right yet.
Right.
Isn't it due? Isn't it due, though, on April first? Don't we have to make a decision?
Yeah, that's why.
That's what I'm saying, is that we can actually make a decision in this meeting to roll it over for a six-month term.
I don't think it's anything that needs to be voted on. It, I think it was just something that it was in there already. And we're just gonna carry it over, continue the same process that we had. I, I'm not sure it needs a resolution or anything.
If nothing's gonna change, we won't, but I mean, the question is why?
It was only, the only thing we were debating was the length of time. Six months versus a year, so I just didn't wanna lock it up for a full year, not knowing, uh, for that small amount of gain. Uh, maybe later in the year, something comes up that we need something like that, and, uh, I think it'd be well worth, uh, having access to that.
Well, Rhonda's email said that the April first, wait, let me see if I can find it, um, the April first due date will earn a bit more interest. So I'm not sure I understand, cause then she said the computer's not able to process interest into the future for April first of twenty twenty-one. So I don't, did that mean twenty twenty-two or?
L, LCB then called after that email.
Okay.
And gave the six-month rate and the twelve-month rate as of a due date of April first, so.
Okay, that was the second email. I got that. But the due date is still in two days. Right, either way.
Hmm.
I think, I think, I think Randy had a good idea with it being only six months, that, you know, give him six months to see what, you know, if something comes up down there, or if they find a dump truck or whatever.
Yeah, we, cause the trucks are getting, uh, to the age where, you know, we, we don't wanna tie that up if we don't have to. We, we wanted to move forward with the one-ton truck, uh, but we've had them, uh, the money in the permissive fund for that, so. Um, I think we can do without this one for at least six months, but I don't wanna tie it up for the year. So with everyone's agreement, we can, uh, I'll just, we can email that back to Rhonda and let her know that we, uh, wanna leave that money in that CD, but only for the six-month period.
I have no issue with that.
Okay with that.
Yeah, I'm saying.
Okay, I'll send that email to Rhonda, just, uh, uh, answering or responding to that email she sent out. And, uh, we'll go with that. Six months then.
All right. So.
So.
Any other comments? Based on the topics we're working tonight?
Hey, can I, can I go backwards one minute to the Otarma report? Does, was there, was there a timeframe on the list that we had, uh, to, um, I know those are all suggestions or whatever on that list, fix. Was there a timeframe on that?
I missed assessment. I never saw one.
It was meant to be done as quickly as we could.
Yeah, I, I don't think they actually said that there was a specific deadline, but they want you to do it as, you know, kind of post haste.
Okay, is that, is that something, uh, as we get those done, checked off, that you want reported back, uh, to everybody, or just is, is there a point person for this, so we can let everybody know that what we've completed, accomplished on those?
Well, you can either hang on to it or at the next meeting, uh, you know, give your report, or when you get it done, you can let Karen know and then she can email all the trustees and let us know that those are done.
Excellent, okay, that's what I'll do.
That's the best thing, cause we each divided up different things that we were gonna do and, um, Karen is probably the best hub. Assuming you don't mind, Karen, um, that everybody will just get it back to her and then let her farm it out from there.
Excellent, that's what we'll do.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I looked at the report again, and basically it just says that implementing of the following recommendations and procedures may reduce potential liability. So.
Yeah.
As quickly as we could get it done, it's in our best interest.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody have anything else regarding the insurance or the permissive fund?
I do not.
Nope.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Seconded.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.